Here.
Councilmember Mollica.
Here.
Councilmember Flowers.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Becky Brown will be absent. Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Escobal.
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from council? Hearing none, we will go right to presentations. And who is going to be doing this now? Come on up. Okay, and this is for No Shave November donation to an American Cancer Society. Oh, you don't want to give us a donation? All right, okay, okay.
But I'll throw it out.
Okay. So, who is going to be doing this now? Everybody. Come on, bring them, bring everyone up.
It's small for the camera.
Okay.
You guys should do it for the camera.
Wow, that's a lot of money, guys.
I'd like to present this check to American Cancer Society from Chief May Allah Officers to Grow Their Views for the month of November. So, we can raise money. We raised seven, six hundred and three dollars this year.
That's great.
As you can see, a couple of our officers are on a special under-congress.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And you guys, this is means so much to us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And I just wanted to let you guys know that this goes to, obviously, saving lives and cancer research. And right now, just in the state of Colorado, we are funding 7.4 million dollars in cancer research, just in our state. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is for you guys. It's a picture of our survivors this year, our cancer survivors, and then a thank you for you guys. So, we cannot appreciate you guys enough. Thank you so so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is public invited to be heard, five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to council on anything other than the one issue we have, which is the supplemental appropriation for our public hearing? But you can speak on anything else. All right, come on up.
I've got a copy of this. I believe I gave it to her. For all of you.
So, would you please sign in?
I would, yeah.
All right, and tell us your name and...
My pen name or my real name?
Whatever, both of them.
Okay, my name's, my name's Don Buntrock. And anyway, I've, I've got five minutes, I might as well just start reading it.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here tonight as a lifelong resident of Northland. My family moved into our new home in 1965. The reason I'm here tonight is because I'm disgusted and appalled by the decision of the mayor and the city council regarding CR 131 16128. The rule of law is the only thing that keeps a civilized society civil. People not, people do not get to pick and choose which laws they will abide by and which laws they will ignore. We change laws through elections, not individual whims and desires. For the past eight years, I've watched a lawless president embolden liberal city governments to give sanctuary to illegal immigrants. He lied, deceived, and manipulated the truth on a daily basis without negative reporting by a complicit and partisan liberal media. You have stated that the city of Northland will not enforce immigration laws on individuals who have not committed criminal acts, but their presence in our country is a criminal act. There's a legal way to attain citizenship here. What you have chosen to do is a criminal act in itself. You've stated that the Northland Police Department is not responsible for upholding federal laws. This is not true. The argument that you do not have the funding does not ring true to me either when all it takes is a telephone call or email to a federal agency, ICE, to report the location and whereabouts of these, where these people reside. If illegal immigrants knew, know the law will be enforced, they will be less likely to move and reside here. President-elect Trump has stated that he will take away federal funding for sanctuary cities. This will negatively impact the legal citizens of our city. Speaking of the negative impact of illegal immigration, violent crimes are committed at a much higher rate by illegal immigrants. Healthcare costs are inflated dramatically because federal law states that hospitals and doctors must treat illegal immigrants regardless of their ability of pay. The Colorado Department of Motor Vehicles has stopped requiring proof of insurance to register a vehicle because of illegal immigrants. A disproportionate number of driving-under-the-influence fatalities also are caused by illegal immigrants. The value of Northland property owners will decrease due to your resolution. Illegal immigrants take jobs from legal citizens at a time when there are 95 million Americans out of the workforce. President Obama claims the unemployment rate is 4.7. In reality, it's almost 29 percent. Many illegal immigrants are used as drug mules on their way into our nation and our state. The state of Colorado has changed from red to blue largely because of illegal immigration. Few illegal immigrants speak English, our national language, and they disrespect our authority and do not pledge allegiance to our flag. The liberal big government policies and the welfare state it fosters has created 20 trillion dollars in debt for our country. At this point, we cannot afford to take care of legal U.S. citizens. History tells us we are on the verge of an economic catastrophe. If this occurs, we will look more like a third world country than the once great country of the United States of America. The stupidity of the timing of your resolution is unbelievable. Donald Trump won a landslide election because of this very issue. The legal citizens of our country are fed up with illegal immigration and want it to stop. Because of your unanimous vote on this matter, I assume, assume you are all liberal Democrats. Do you realize that in the past six years, Democrats have lost over 1,200 seats in state and federal governments? The policies of the left have been rejected by the people of this great nation in spite of the liberal press, the education system. In the past eight years, I've seen most news stories orchestrated by the White House, the false narrative of rampant racism in the police force, and the Black Lives Matter movement was created to divide Americans. The identity politics of the left is where real racism is occurring. Due to affirmative action and reverse discrimination, government agencies have hired minorities, minorities at a much higher rate than their percentages in the general population. Government unions, SEIU, and the teachers' union give their annual dues to Democrat election campaigns, millions of taxpayer dollars every election. For the past eight years, I've been called a racist, bigot, homophobe, xenophobe because I'm a Christian conservative. I'm here to tell you that conservatives believe in the God-given rights and freedoms of the individual. We believe that people should be identified by their name, social security number, and their acts and deeds. There should not be a box to check identifying one's race, religion, gender, or sexuality. Our reality is American lives matter. Democrat politicians do not want voter identification because they know illegals will vote for them, and they need a permanent underclass to stay in power. Illegal immigrants...
You have one minute now, one minute.
Illegal immigrants come to our country because they are enticed by the welfare state and government handouts. Democrat, Democrat politicians literally buy votes with taxpayers' money. Arizona passed a law that mirrored the federal law, and Obama refused to enforce, so the state could stop the flow of illegal immigrants in their own accord using state agencies. However, President Obama's Department of Justice sued Arizona to stop the state from protecting the citizens in their interest. Two years ago, thousands of unaccompanied children from Central America crossed the U.S. border in one organized effort. The U.S. and Mexican governments knew they were coming months in advance. In Colorado, the federal center in Lakewood was preparing to house, feed, and educate 1,000 of these kids. The Catholic Diocese was asked and agreed to help these children and put them in foster care all over the country.
Your five minutes are up, but we do have your...
I'm almost, I've only got a couple left.
I, your five minutes are up. We do have your presentation, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Please consider my words.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone here else who would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one, are you speaking to, oh, okay. All right, next is financial report. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here to present the October 2016 monthly financial report. I'll start off with an update on sales and use tax. Year-to-date sales and use tax has increased at just under $550,000 on the year, which is approximately 3.5 percent when compared to 2015 at this time. Within that number, sales tax is up 3 percent. Our auto use tax is up just 1 percent. And then food tax is up about 2.6 percent on the year. I'll begin with the general funds, unless anybody has any questions specific to sales and use tax at this time.
Questions?
Kind of, the ship is moving kind of slow and steady, so we don't have anything outstanding to report, which is what finance directors like, I think, for the most part, because there's nothing that, out of the norm for most of our funds, or for all of our funds, actually. The general fund revenues totaled $19.9 million. Total taxes were at 14.3. That's up a little over 4.5 percent compared to the prior year. Total revenues you'll see on page two of the report are down slightly, at 3 percent, but will go up a couple of lines to kind of the total operating revenues, and those are actually up 3.4 percent. The other financing is land sales, which contribute to the, the decrease, I guess, if you look in total from year to year. But overall, revenue is up about 3.4 percent when you look at the operating revenues in the general fund. For expenditures in the general fund, those are at $18.1 million. And that's actually down 300,000 from the year before, or down about 1.6 percent. A lot of that is one-time service contracts or capital expenditures for vehicles and things that occurred in 2015 and not in 2016. But all in all, our spending rate is at 73 percent of budget. This is, we're 83 percent of the way through the year in October, so we're seeing some savings, I guess, in spending as far as the timing. This is pretty consistent with our spending patterns historically, to be about 73 percent of the budget at this point. Any questions on the general fund? No? All right, on the water and wastewater fund, on page four of the report, total revenues are $11.8 million. That's up 5 percent compared to the prior year. Total expenditures in the fund are at 10.3 million. That's up about 7 percent, largely due to capital expenditures for our headworks and clarifier project. You'll see in the blue box on page four, water usage and sewer usage. Both are up slightly year-over-year. And you'll see the food tax detail as well, being up 2.6 percent. All in all, collections of revenue and spending in line for that fund. Next, the stormwater fund. Total revenues are at $334,000 with expenditures totaling $142,000. You'll see operating revenues up slightly at 3.3 percent, and then expenditures up about 9.3 percent. Again, that's in line with our expectations and budget for 2016. And then lastly, the sanitation fund. Total revenues are at $1.2 million with expenditures of just under 1.3 million for a change in fund balance of 67, a decrease of 67,000 dollars. Sanitation fund, you'll see charges for services. That revenue line is down slightly at 0.5 percent, but that's really just a timing thing. Revenue should be consistent year-over-year. Recycling revenue obviously is down significantly, as we've discussed throughout the year. On page 10, that's kind of where we take a look at geographic code, sales and use tax for the city, city geographic areas. You'll see most of those are in positive territory. Some of our larger areas, you know, range from 1 to 5 percent growth year-over-year. As far as any of the decreases, we feel that they're pretty minor in nature. Do not have any concerns over any specific area that we need to bring to your attention at this point. I can answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, that is the October report.
Questions? I think we're good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. Next is the consent agenda.
October.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is public hearings. Joanna?
This is on CB 1878, a bill for a special ordinance amending the 2016 budget recognizing revenues and appropriating expenditures by supplemental appropriation for the payment of the costs and expenses of the municipal government, agencies, and offices of the City of Northland, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2016.
I'll now open the public hearing on CB 1878. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against CB 1878? Seeing no one to pronounce, I will close that public hearing and we'll move to ordinance's second reading, which is the same as the public hearing, so I don't think you need to read the title again. Can I have a motion, please?
October.
Second.
Jim?
Staff supports the memo that's in front of you proposing two supplemental appropriations, ones for the community development block grant, and the second is for the 420,000 for the purchase of real property earlier this year.
Discussion? Hearing now, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1878 on second reading passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snetsinger.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to resolutions. First one is CR 138.
Resolution establishing the mill levy of the City of Northland, Colorado for the fiscal year 2016, collectible in 2017 for municipal purposes. Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, every year, under state statutes, county assessors must provide preliminary property valuation to each local taxing entity by August each year. And so, in a quarter, in order to account for the changes, the assessors are permitted to recertify the property valuations on December 10th, or by December 10th. And so, City of Northland then does this mill levy certification annually. And just for the public record, that's 11.5, excuse me, 11.597 mill levy on assessed real property, which is 7.597, used to support general operating, and then four mills, which is scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2019, for the purposes of major road and street reconstruction projects. And so, the total assessed valuation is listed in your memo with the percent change, and we do recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing now, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 138 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 139.
A resolution adopting the 2017 budget of the City of Northland, Colorado, and appropriating the sums set forth therein.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This resolution is to approve the 2017 annual operating and capital improvement budget for the city. We've had extensive discussion over the last several months, so I'll just summarize that the total budget is $62,44,853. We also have full-time equivalents in the budget as required, and we have 262.94 full-time equivalents in the budget. We do recommend approval as noted in the memo.
Thank you. Discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 139 passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Snetsinger.
Next is CR 140.
A resolution adopting the City of Northland 2017 pay plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll just summarize this briefly, and then Ms. Jensen is here, as well as some other department heads, in case you have some specific questions as well. Attached to this is a resolution to adopt the 2017 pay plan. We typically do this the same meeting as the budget. It does reflect the salary range adjustments from the midpoint of the 2016 salary survey with a cap of 5 percent. So, again, the seller, the salary adjustments will range between essentially 1 and 5 percent, depending on the position. And then that will take effect December 24th of 2016, which is the start of the new pay period for 2017. That's why that date is noted here. We also made some minimum wage adjustments for some seasonal positions, which are noted here. We have positions that have been added to the pay plan. In terms of title, not necessarily position, we're trying to provide a step process in there for, or career progression process for those planning positions. We also removed the childcare provider from the, from the pay plan, and we did a title change reclassification in the police department. So, with that, we do recommend approval of the resolution.
Discussion? Hearing now, please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 140 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 141.
A resolution setting minimum and maximum salary ranges for the City of Northland department heads.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, very briefly, we have a resolution here that would adopt the 2017 department head salaries effective December 24th, 2016. Again, this is also based on that salary survey that we did, so you'll see in the memo ranges from zero up to, in this case, 4 percent. And so, we do recommend approval of this resolution as well.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing now, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 141 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 142.
A resolution approving the member-agency jointer agreement and services agreement between the City of Northland and the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium and Numerica Corporation for a law enforcement data warehouse.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is something that had to come in front of you because it's a multi-jurisdictional contract. It's really a very, very small dollar amount, but it does authorize the, the mayor to sign an agreement then between CISC and Numerica for a service agreement for a law enforcement data warehouse. We will receive some credits multiplied by the current number of full-time sworn, which is 66 people. So, it's a $1,320 credit, which will enable us to purchase a license of $1,170. So, we actually have a balance remaining credit of $150. So, there's actually no financial impact with this, but because it's a multi-agency agreement, we need to bring it in front of you for approval, so we recommend approval.
Thank you. Discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 142 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 143.
A resolution approving an agreement between the City of Northland and Sturgeon Electric Company, Incorporated, for traffic signal inspection, testing, and emergency response.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor, again, members of council. Mr. Willet's a subject matter expert on these next several, but I'll hit the highlights here and follow up with any questions. Again, we have a traffic signal inspection, testing, and emergency repair contract that provides for all of our 38 traffic signals, 23 school zone flashes, as outlined here. The original contracts for one year with one-year extensions, up to a maximum of five years. We're pleased to report that staff recommends Sturgeon Electric contract for 2017 based on the great work they've done in 2016, which would be a contract for $115,000. We recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion? Jim?
So, I saw that we're going to be doing LED retrofits, and what kind of a cost is that? Is there an additional cost? Are the bulbs cheaper, more expensive, that kind of information?
I'll defer to David on that one. There's definitely an upfront capital, but our long-term O and M should be lower.
Good morning, ma'am, councilmembers. Great question. I don't have the answer for you tonight. I, as the city manager said, the long-term operation and maintenance is significantly less. I don't know from a regular bulb to LED exactly what those costs are, but I can certainly provide that to council.
Are those costs included in the price of this contract, or is that additional, like, would be paid hardware costs?
That's included in this, in this cost.
Okay.
Yes, it's maintenance and repair, so when we come across a signal, it's a signal head that's got, you know, bad bulbs, and it will replace them with LED, LEDs.
And that's part of this cost, so it's not an additional cost?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, David. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 143 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 144.
A resolution approving a service agreement between the City of Northland and Waste Management of Colorado, Incorporated, for calendar year 2017, single-stream recycling services.
Move to approve.
Second.
David?
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, not Dave, Jim, I'm sorry.
He'll be up in a second.
Whichever.
This is, this one is for the recycling services contract. We've got another one that's right after this regarding landfill services. But for years, Northland and Thorne have partnered on competitive bids for these services. And in December of 2012, the City of Thorne received two bids, Waste Management Alpine Waste. Waste Management was selected at that time, and under the contract, we have the option to renew that for a period of up to five-year, one additional term. So, 2013 plus then five more years. We've got a couple of years left, so we recommend that this resolution be approved for Waste Management in Northland for 2017 recycling services.
Discussion? Yes, Karen?
So, I, I saw that the, the revenues since 2014, David, and it's obviously gone down. I know you've explained how those are determined, but there's no dollar amount here. And so, is any of this negative revenue passed on to the consumer, or does, is it just kind of encompassed into the, the cost of our trash service?
Till latter. It's encompassed into the cost of the trash service. And I am happy to say that the last several months, we're actually getting about a dollar a ton for the tipping fee. So, we, the commodity prices have come back such that we, we just are over in the plus category right now, even though for the year, we're still down negative.
Perfect. And then one more thing, Mayor.
Sure.
I know that at the end, it shows the accepted materials and the materials that aren't accepted at the Franklin Street location. Is there a way that we can get that information out? Because just looking at those list of materials there, I was surprised to see some that aren't accepted. And so, it was an eye-opener for me. Is there a way that we can get that information out? Maybe in the connection or utility billing or...
Yeah, every, yes, we can. Every year, we put them out early with, with the routes, with the billings. And I believe it's on the webpage, too. But we can certainly put another, another issue out in connection as well. Perfect. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Karen?
Are there any predictions for 2017 for the commodities market of how it will be next year?
No, I wish I knew, but no, no predictions at all.
Have you heard of any cities that have determined to do away with their recycling program based on just the numbers, either they can't afford it or...
I haven't really been too involved with the solid waste industry this, this year, but I know there are a lot of cities that contemplate just diverting their recyclers with their trash at this point. Maybe not so much in the East Coast, but certainly out here, where disposal is really still cheap.
That's too bad. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, David. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 144 passes unanimously.
Next, CR 145.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Northland and Allied Waste Systems of Colorado LLC for calendar year 2017 landfill services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, this is another agreement... Again, this is another agreement for bidding between Thornton and Northland. In this case, it was for landfill services, which was done in 2014. We opened those bids late 2013, total of three bidders. Allied Waste of Colorado was the low bidder. It gave a unit price of $11 per ton. They currently have two landfills, Commerce City and Golden. They did sign the agreement to provide those landfill services at an increased price, then $11.88 per ton for the calendar year of 2017, which is an 8% increase over last year. We do recommend approval of this resolution for a contract in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Thank you. Discussion? Kyle?
David, can you just explain this to me? Because I had the same question earlier when I was reading it about that it's an 8% increase, but that the vendor had the option of only a 2.9% increase.
They haven't raised the rates any in the last couple, three years. So this, in combination, if you did 2.9 for three or four years...
So they can lump all of those together in one year? It's not like a use it or lose it type thing?
It's negotiable. You know, I think myself and staff believe it's a fair increase, considering they hadn't raised the rates in two or three years prior to that, to this.
Thank you.
Discussion? Any other discussion? Thank you, David. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 145 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 146.
A resolution approving agreements between the City of Northland and American West Construction LLC and the City of Northland and CNL Water Solutions, Incorporated for emergency pipeline repairs.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, we have a utility emergency response contract that provides for these emergency repairs to the water system and sewer system as needed. In addition, we are required to have pre-established rates for labor and equipment from contractors if they're going to perform any work under FEMA. So it's really good to have this information in place and these contracts in place in the event of a natural disaster. The original contracts, as mentioned, were awarded to American West Construction and CNL Water Solutions. CNL did not request a price increase for 2016. And American West had a small price increase in labor and equipment that are really within the industry standards. So we do recommend approval of both of these contracts for 2017.
Thank you. Discussion?
So, Jim, I have a question there. It says the original contracts were for two-year terms, 2016, 17. So why are we doing this now in 2017 if it already had a two-year term?
I'll have to look into that, Councilmember Snatzinger. It could be a typo here. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thank you. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 146 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 147.
A resolution approving the legal services agreement between the City of Northland and Fisher Brown Bartlett &amp; Gunn PC.
Move to approve.
Kim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Fisher Brown Bartlett &amp; Gunn has been our water council since 1985. They have an incredible institutional knowledge of our legal history, our water history, et cetera. And so we're proposing that we extend their contract for 2017 to not to exceed $200,000. And again, the funding for this is from the Water and Wastewater Fund, Water Resources, Professional Services, and we recommend approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and CR 147 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 148.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Northland and Lamp, Reinerson, and Associates, doing business as TZA Water Engineers for Water and Water Rights Engineering.
Move to approve.
Second. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, Lamp, Reinerson, and Associates, they're doing business as TZA Water Engineers, Inc. They've provided support for us from an engineering standpoint with our water rights for now going on 20 years. They're currently working on some change case applications that are clearly going to spill into next year. And so we've really relied on them over the last several years, especially with a lot of expert testimony when we go to these court change cases. So we're recommending a contract of $150,000 not to exceed for 2017, and we recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Discussion? Kim?
So we've had them on board since 1997. Have we gone out for bid on these services since then?
No, we have not. At least since I've been here. I don't know before 2009. But I just want to point out to council that these are, the methods that goes and supports our change cases is very proprietary. It's very similar to staying with our water rights attorneys in Fort Collins, FBBG. The services they provide are both professional, legal, and engineering, and they're both really proprietary to what we're doing in our water rights acquisition.
Okay, while I appreciate that, I do have quite a bit of heartburn that we have not gone out for pricing on this in many years. And that's not to say that they're not either, our organization isn't doing a good job for us. It's just a matter of we need to be checking on these pricing. We do have, I think, an ordinance or a resolution that says for a lot of our other services that we will be checking on those, the costs of those every several years. So I just want to point that out. And then just kind of a general question on all of these agreements that we've just authorized. These are already in the 2017 budget, correct?
That's right.
At those levels?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that our residents knew that these were already in there and weren't going to be additional costs that we're now changing after we've just approved a budget. So I think maybe next year, the process, we might need to change up a little bit. Since we've already approved them in the budget, maybe we need to approve the agreements before the budget. Just a thought.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
There we go. I'll close that vote and CR 148 passes unanimously.
All right, next is discussion items. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. And we have all of our members of the Finance Committee here tonight as well. They want to chime in after I make my remarks. So I put together a memo here, which is a result of some discussion we had with the Finance Committee about, I guess, two weeks ago on November 30th. At that meeting, the Finance Committee took the tasking, if you will, from the council that to look at the outside agency funding policy as well as the sponsorship policy. And one of the discussion points was, should we just include this in one resolution? So what I've attached here is a draft edit, if you will, from the 2006 Resolution on Outside Agency Funding, which would have the effect of continuing to have the OAF Committee. And then that committee would have two functions. One would be to review grant requests that come in to the committee based on some specified process. And we think we've loosened up the process a little bit in terms of the timing, about when we have to do that. We figured that could be more of an administrative function. But then the second piece of it was to look at sponsorship requests. And we tried to make a distinction in the resolution that outside agency funding is really intended to focus on nonprofit organizations that are providing a direct impact to our residents or our businesses, if you will, mostly our residents, with the idea that they're a nonprofit and they need a small amount of grant funding to either continue their organization, maybe they have a special project or something like that. Sponsorships, we were treating differently. These would typically also be nonprofits, but they may or may not be located in the city. They may or may not provide direct benefit to our residents. Yet, it would be an organization us worthy of sponsoring because we get name recognition or other benefits that are maybe more intangible than a directed grant would have. I think during our discussions with Mr. Loveland and with the city clerk, we agree we probably need to include some definitions of memberships, sponsorships, grant funding, maybe a definition of donations. I know Jason sent me some things earlier today, which we can work into here. But I really wanted to introduce this topic and let you know we've got a couple of options moving forward. We can have some short discussion tonight and put it on a regular council meeting on January 9th for adoption. Or we're prepared to come back next week as a full-blown study session if we want to roll up our sleeves and talk about this a little bit more. So with that, I'll defer to the committee if you want to add anything to this.
Joe?
Well, it's up to you guys if you want to discuss it further. I mean, everything's laid out here pretty good. And I don't think any of us knew that this committee actually has existed since 2006. It was kind of a surprise when we talked about it. And then we changed up the amount that we would send out there. But it sounds like Jason has come up with a couple of other ideas as far as the membership sponsorships and stuff like that, which we would probably have to discuss in detail.
So it sounds to me like a study session?
I'm thinking so everybody can...
Okay.
Review it?
Any input?
Or do you want to talk?
I'm confused on the process. Why, if this was going to be a study session, then why was it brought forth tonight? Because I don't feel comfortable voting or giving guidance on something if we haven't had an opportunity. I feel like it's kind of backwards a little bit.
No, this is just for discussion.
I know, but I'm kind of curious why this just wasn't brought to the study session just from the get-go instead of bringing it tonight? If it's going to be a study session thing? Because I definitely have comments, but if there's going to be a study session, then we can just wait for the study session.
Yeah, I think the discussion with the committee a couple of weeks ago was that, I guess, I'll speak for the committee a little bit. We thought we did a pretty good job of crafting it. And we thought it would be, introduce it tonight as a discussion item and then just adopt it on January 9th. But we also wanted to include that option in here that if the council wanted to have a larger group discussion about it, we would just hold it over till next week.
So go ahead and make your...
Well, yeah, I definitely have some discussion items. And I would probably ask that it be put off to the study session so that we can have maybe a more in-depth conversation.
Okay. Any, sure. Anyone else?
I'm okay with that, yeah. I have questions, too, so sure.
Study session it is.
Mayor, I do have a question now. So what is the purpose of the purchasing policy placed in with the discussion regarding outside agency funding and sponsorships?
So I think what we were thinking about there was, if you recall, we were having a discussion, should we add language into the resolution about compliance with the ethics policy? And the thought process was that rather than rewrite that into this resolution, we should just reference the purchasing policy, which contains the ethics policy.
Okay. Anyone else? So study session.
All right, very well.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is Communications. And Kim, I'll start with you this time.
I have a couple of things, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the employee luncheon at Sinzetti's. And kudos to staff. It was a lot of fun, great turnout from staff. And it seemed like everyone was really enjoying themselves, even though the weather wasn't all that nice. But it was a great event. We also met as a legislative committee this evening before council. And we were working on the city's legislative policy. And so I think we made a lot of progress towards that. And that will be coming to the council as a whole at our next study session so that we can discuss that further and kind of get some guidance from council if there's anything missing, if they want to add something. And then just lastly, Mayor, I know we had some public comments tonight. I just want to put it out there that as a council member, I will continue fighting for the residents of our community. And I will continue to do whatever it takes to ensure that they, that members of our community feel safe. I appreciate the comments, but I feel I was proud of what we did as a council and I would do it again.
Thank you. Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to echo those remarks. I think I am proud to be an American and most importantly, proud to be able to answer this council with that resolution decision. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Joe? Carol?
Just a couple of items. We had a senior organization meeting today. And the total for the bake sale for the NSO, they raised just under 1,200. I think it was like 1,180. So that's really good for a bake sale for the seniors.
I feel like we should do like a round of applause.
There was all kinds of goodies. So that was a great event for them. I wanted to mention that Nun Crackers, the musical, the comedy musical, Comedy Christmas Musical, I'm forgetting all the words. Okay, so that's still, there's three more shows. It's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:30 this weekend. So go see it. It's supposed to be great. I have not gone yet, so I don't know, but I've heard that it was wonderful, so.
What's it called again?
Nun Crackers.
Nun Crackers?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's kind of a religious comedy Christmas musical. How's that? I don't know. I haven't seen it, so I probably shouldn't describe it. I'm just using Michael's words, okay? Okay, I also helped with CASA for donating and actually mostly wrapping gifts for the children of 17 judicial. So it was really a great event. A lot of people showed up to Macaulay, Heart and Mary to help wrap presents. So that is kind of a personal feel-good thing and for a good cause, so.
Mercy? Antonia?
Just a couple of things. I too attended the employee luncheon. I tend to overdo it when I go there. It was very nice. People seemed to be enjoying themselves. Friday, I attended the Flat Rock Academy graduation. Very well attended by, well, it's not just this community. It goes all the way to Parker and Yuma County. So, but the place was full, standing room only. And our two officers who were graduates, I was able to congratulate them. And they seemed happy to be on board. Point of personal privilege, my great-grandson, Peter Alexander, came into the world Friday morning.
Ah, congratulations.
I wasn't able to make it, but my wife, I flew her out on Thursday because of the storm that was in Utah. So she's there with him and the family. And we're looking to a new era.
Great.
First great-grandson.
Wow. All right. Cory?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, Jim?
I just wanted to update council. We had a leadership team retreat on Friday. I went up to the county building, the conference center they have up there. We spent the morning doing disc profile analysis and having a facilitated discussion about how we're different, how we can work well together. So I thought that was really valuable. I'll get more feedback from the team tomorrow morning, but I thought it was really well done. And then we spent some of the afternoon taking the 2017 work plan and trying to map that out literally for 12 months. So we've got, you know, quarters of when we're going to start and end things in that plan. But we really wanted to try to get a handle on capacity to make sure, number one, we're not filling up your meetings, but that we've got time to get things done in the accordance schedule that we laid out. We also kicked around some ideas for your retreat in February, really largely focused on the 2018 budget, capital projects, et cetera. So more to come on that. But I am interviewing a facilitator. Going to go to lunch with him on Thursday and just chat about his experience, excuse me, and really focusing on how we can get facilitated discussion about capital project work plan, things like that, that I think are most important to you as we look at next February. That's it.
Joanna?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mayor? I just wanted to piggyback on Carol's. Nun Crackers was hilarious. I did go on Friday and it was a riot, so.
So was it a Christmas, what did I say it was?
Yes.
Comedy Xmas religious musical? Maybe not religious.
Not too much religious, but yes. It was, it was fun. It was fun, so I would recommend it.
We don't want to spoil the play. All right then. Next is public invited to be heard. Anyone here that would like to speak to council for up to three minutes? Seeing no one approach, we will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Section 4.5 Parent A of the City of Northland Home Rule Charter for personnel matters regarding council appointee evaluations.
Second.
Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I'll close that vote and the motion to adjourn to executive session passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now in executive session.